All right, good evening. Thank you everyone for being here today. I'd like to call to order our meeting. It's the Islam Meadow Public Schools School Committee Meeting. It's a regular session meeting. It's March 23rd, 2015. I can't believe we're already coming into the end of March. It is 7:00 PM. As a reminder, this meeting is being both audio and videotaped. And if we can please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have our roll call vote. And I'm gonna keep us on our toes tonight. And I'm gonna start to my right tonight, so you can begin.
Jack Whedon, State Representative.
Kathy Salety, Record and Secretary.
Dariel Jars, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Bill Fonseca.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Deirdre Mayhew.
Rich Fuchero.
Gregory Thompson.
Elizabeth Marcy and Boucher.
Oh, good, so we all did that. All right, so we have the approval of some minutes. We have our March 9th, 2015, our regular session meeting minutes.
Will do approve the regular session meeting minutes of March 9th, 2015.
Okay, motion's made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. Carries forward, five zero. Okay, moving on, we have the approval of March 9th, 2015, executive session meeting minutes.
Move to approve March 9th, 2015, executive session meeting minutes.
Okay, motion made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. Carries forward, five zero. And moving down to the last one, we have our March 16th, 2015, executive session.
Move to approve the March 16th, 2015, executive session meeting minutes.
Okay, motion's made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. Okay, that carries forward, five zero. All right, we have our committee and subcommittee communications. So Beth, if you'd like to start with anything.
I'm just gonna mention that Mountain View's having their talent show at the high school at 7:00 PM on Friday. And also, the Maple Shade and the Mountain View art show, which is a very good time, is gonna be on the 30th at 7:00 PM. Highly recommended.
I'll be there, both. Hi, I'm Allseth, thank you, Chair.
I toured all our buildings and our system. I make a very quick general comment. I was very impressed by the energy in the buildings and also impressed by the learning taking place. And you normally see in the classroom, but when you're walking down the hallways, all the examples of student work, really, really, just very effective to see. So, a lot of good things going on in our district, a lot of good things.
I'm glad to hear that. Okay, Bill Fonseca, do you have anything for us?
Just the policy subcommittee got together last week and discussed what you see tonight on professional staff hiring. And we reviewed policy and made a few changes to student travel. And those will be coming to you probably next meeting.
And Jack, do you have anything to share with us?
Just one thing. On March 25th, there's a high school in Burton Park concert at 7:00 PM. Other than that, things are fairly quiet at the high school.
Music in our schools, come on.
That's right. Okay, and I know, Mr. Smith, you have something that you wanna share with us.
Yes, just to alert everybody, we talked briefly about it as a full group. But April 28th is the social media awareness evening. It's gonna be a district-wide event held at Burtonland. We're partnering with the District Attorney's Office. And it'll go from 6:00 until about 8:00 PM. With the District Attorney's Office doing most of the presenting up until the end, when I believe they're then going to open up for sort of a panel question and answer. One of the District Attorney's Office representatives will be with the leadership team on Thursday to go over sort of what their presentation is and how we can integrate and work with them.
Because I think it was based on the last one we had, that state key night, the opiate awareness night. I guess based on the end-of-night surveys that were filled out, the social media awareness, I think, was one of the hotter topics.
Those were big topics, yeah.
So they were able to put something together and bring it to us.
And it's quick, too. They're not messing around, which is pretty impressive.
Well, I think it's something that DA's office already has set up, so we're just providing a venue where they can present their information. So that's why I think it's coming so quickly.
And there will be follow-up evenings on the opiate awareness. They're trying to schedule another follow-up evening for parents and for students. The high school actually has Chris Heron coming to speak with the students. Is that April, do you know the date off?
April 6th.
April 6th, okay.
And actually, in our policy, I was gonna mention, in our policy subcommittee, we discussed speaking with the nursing staff. And they're gonna look into getting the training and whatnot that they need for the Narcan, which was something they mentioned would be good. So, some good stuff from that first meeting.
Right, our nurses most likely will train with Department of Public Health in August. And we're hoping that Department of Public Health gives us a sample model policy to use. And then we would have a policy subcommittee meeting and try to put that on the books so that you both have the training. You also need doctor's orders in order to have that in the school system. So our school physician probably could supply us with that. And then we'd have the policy on the books coming out of August.
Thank you for that. Do you want me to do four first?
Okay, so before we move on, I'm just going to state at this point, this would be the opportunity for visitors to address the committee. I know you're here tonight, Teresa, but were you wanting to share anything?
Well, I just came from an informational perspective. My name is Teresa Robosa. I'm a parent in the district. My daughter is in first grade.
We may just need you to come up then, because I think Mr. Mackey needs it for the microphone. I don't mean to intimidate you by all means, but Teresa, sit down.
Okay, sure.
She needs it for, he needs it for the microphone, or it's just not going to.
My name is Teresa Robosa. I am a parent in the district. I have currently a daughter in first grade. I also have two younger children. One will be in kindergarten next year, and then I have a three-year-old. And I had some correspondence with you regarding plans for the new high school. This is a hot topic amongst a lot of parents in the district. And we were kind of wondering where we were at in the process. And you provided me with some information. And I was really here just to see where we were going and what assistance you might need from parents that are in favor of doing something with the high school, maybe from a grassroots perspective. You know, I just wanted to get a sense of really where we're at, because I don't really know that much yet.
I know. So what I'll do is I'll pass that on to Mr. Smith. I know, this usually, just so you know, it's usually an opportunity where you address the committee. We normally don't have a policy where we would answer you back or have to really give you any visiting. But I think it is good, because I know we are getting ready to send in another statement of interest. So I'm just gonna let Mr. Smith answer you tonight.
So, one, your students currently being at Meadowbrook?
Yes.
Good chance, hopefully, they'll have something by the time they get to the high school. But two, to give you, and some of this I said to you in the email, we are putting in another statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority. Right now, we're finishing up revising the different sections from last year's statement of interest. One of the things we need, and we should get it, knock on wood, this week, is the NASC report, because the visiting team came to us in October. They credit the high school educational program. But one of the standards is around community resources. And that's something that we can use directly in our statement of interest report. If in any way, resources that are coming from the community jeopardizes your accreditation, that's a strong argument for the MSBA to look at this and feel that there's a sense of urgency here. So everything will be submitted to the Mass School Building Authority by April 10th. Then, they have a long process themselves. They meet some during the summer and then later in the fall, somewhere in the late October, early November range. Hopefully, if we get on their agenda, they're able to give us some kind of feedback in the November timeframe. If we don't get on the agenda and get into their discussions in November, we wouldn't hear anything such as we did this year until January. So once that happens, what our hope is, is that we get invited to what they call their eligibility period. And now, talking about community support, now we'll need the community support. Because if you get invited into the eligibility period, you're basically moving toward a community vote to endorse and pay for, even though the Mass School Building Authority will start to reimburse as soon as the town starts paying anything towards this project, pay for what they call feasibility study. And that takes about a year. But if the town does not vote it into place, you're halted in the process. So that's where we would need, not only to get more information out, but then we would certainly need community support. Are people in favor of this? Is this the direction they wanna go in? Which sounds like it may be for you.
Oh, definitely. And, you know, talking to many parents, it is for a lot of parents. This is a hot topic.
It's a very hot topic.
Especially as we look at founding areas, you know, who have gotten new high schools. We're just wondering, when are we next?
Right.
So, you know, what we can, whatever we can do to support you guys. You know, I know there's a group of people, I'm sure a large group of people, that would be really happy to work on that from a grassroots perspective. So I guess.
That would be fantastic. We also have sought out our new state senator, Senator Lesser. And he's gonna come visit the high school April 17th. We had given a tour in the fall to our capital planning committee and some members of appropriations. And so this would be a similar tour with Senator Lesser.
Okay, if I can just add one thing? After the feasibility study, if the town approves it and if we go through the feasibility study, then there's the big.
There's another vote.
There's a town vote and then a ballot vote, right?
Yeah, it has to be approved at the town meeting and then go to ballots.
Both are ballot votes.
And it's almost a year from the feasibility study from where that.
I was gonna say, what was the time?
Yeah, so those are three actually big, we would, you know, we don't even need help with.
Over the course of three years, if you get voted into the eligibility period, you're gonna have two very large votes. First one is to endorse that feasibility study. And then, once that feasibility study is completed and it provides direction as to what type of project the Mass School Building Authority and the district feel should go forward, now you actually have a vote on funding that project.
Okay, well, we're in communication, so, you know, I'm sure we'll be hearing about it as things.
And I give you a lot of credit for coming up here tonight. And the best we can do is keep educating people that they understand the process, that it's not something we're trying to hold up, that it involves this, you know, process that goes through the statement of interest that has, you know, we have to be weighted on. And it becomes slow, you know, it becomes tedious. And it's just great that you're being here tonight.
It can be unfortunately a lengthy process to get accepted into the school building authority's pipeline. For an example, and this has no bearing on us at all, Ludlow has submitted for the last 10 years.
I'll say that.
And it's not been, and it's not been accepted as of yet. But it's just to put it into perspective, our job is to submit the statement of interest. After that, it's basically out of our hands. We can lobby our legislators, which we plan on doing, as Gordon said. But, you know, we're just, we're waiting for them.
And to that effect, if you need us as parents to lobby legislators as well, let us know. Because I'm sure the more voices that they hear, the more sense of urgency they'll feel. So just, you know, keep us in the loop, because there are a lot of parents. I emailed you, and actually, one of my close friends emailed you, Lisa Dagnoli. And there's, like I said, many, many other parents who are interested.
We know, yeah. And, you know, everybody around us has these buildings and, you know. But we understand the urgency here, believe me.
And always welcome to email questions or call. Some of this is easier to speak directly about.
Definitely, okay. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, have a great night. Okay, so that's number four.
I make a motion that we mandate genitual 7.4 and 7.5 to 5.22 and 5.23.
Okay, motion is made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. That carries forward, five to zero. Okay, so moving on, we have our 5.2.1, which is school lunch program. So, if you'd like to come join us.
Yes, you have in your packet a memo for me explaining the school lunch pricing. And the last time we dealt with this was in 2012. And it's a federal regulation that is about the amount of money we need to charge for lunches. And it has to be a weighted average that is higher than what we get for free and reduced. So basically, the federal government isn't subsidizing our lunch program.
Right.
So, we did like a staggered increase the last time that we did this in 2012. We did 25 cents in January, 25 cents in September. So now, what we're looking to do is add 50 cents across the board for the 2015-16 school year. And that should get us to a weighted average of 281, which is slightly above where we need to be. So that should hopefully keep us good for several years.
So how often do they change that?
Well, the price actually goes up a little teeny bit every year. You know, by a penny or sometimes.
Yeah, and last year was like six cents. And it just depends on how much reimbursement they're going to do for the free lunch. And what they want is to be equitable. Where, you know, I'm receiving funds for the free lunch and they feel that a paying lunch should have, be the same amount.
We actually can't participate in this national school lunch program unless we raise it to a certain level, because the amount we're receiving starts to subsidize supposedly our paying families.
And we had asked one time, can we just lower the rate we receive from you to match what we're able to do? And they said no, just so people know.
You have to accept what the federal government gives.
So the federal, I'll give this in this price frame.
Yes, that's what I want the world to know.
Right.
And Mr. Smith, will do the necessary publicity as far as newspapers and those letters?
Yeah, I mean, the change would not take effect until the start of the next school year. So what we would need to do is obviously start to advertise it in the spring and reminders as we get into August that lunch prices are changing.
Will this help you, hopefully, too? A little extra money? Because I know you do wonderful things with what you're getting.
Oh, thank you, yes, absolutely. I mean, I'm always trying to do local and farm fresh. And those are always much more expensive. The cost of the food just for this part of this year is already up 3%. I mean, you see it in your own home groceries. And labor's up a little bit, so, yeah.
So the cost is going for elementary is going from $2 to $2.50. And middle and high school's going from $2.50 to $3, is that correct?
That's the recommendation.
Milk prices changing?
So that's 25%. 25% increase.
The milk, I have not, we have not gone out to bid yet. The milk right now is a, we're out to bid, coming up.
But we don't have to worry about that with the federal.
No, yeah, the federal monies have not.
Fix that price. And no more hoarding those lunch tickets at the cheaper price either.
No.
No, I was gonna say, you have point of service in all the schools now.
And all the schools have, yeah, the computerized registers now.
Laurie, you know how many lunches, non-free and reduced, that we serve in an annual basis? How many lunches we charge for?
On an annual basis?
Yeah, so for charging additional 50 cents per, how much additional revenue will that increase on an annual basis?
I don't have the exact figures offhand. I have it by the month. Do you want it? I have the October.
What's an average day? Do you know an average day?
For free versus reduced?
Yeah, non-free and reduced. What's our, what's the average, well, you do milks, too, and stuff.
Right. You're talking about money or number of meals?
Well, my question, no, my question in the end is.
One day we could do, you know, 500 meals. The next day, if it's a nice meal, we could do 2,000 meals.
Right. I guess my question is, the 50 cents increase over an annual basis, what's the additional revenue? Basically, it's gonna go up 25%, right, Terry?
But you may have more.
What's the revenue on an annual basis for the?
Well, that's my, that's gonna be my question.
No, because our thought is, if we increase, are we gonna see an increase in the number of free and reduced?
My question. You've already seen it.
No, that won't have a bearing on that.
Want to run a 50 cents?
Uh, no.
Right, but then I've also.
It's not relative to the raise, though. But will, will the federal guidelines change to allow for more free and reduced lunch based on this? Based on this increase? Because a lot of times, in the past, their requirements coincide with them demanding increases along, to pass down to districts. So my question is.
Yeah, their income guidelines for free and reduced eligible do change year to year.
Yeah, so I wonder what's gonna happen next year.
And those don't come out till July.
Right. Well, no, is it gonna increase more because of this? And that's the unknown factor.
Well, people might sign up for it.
Well, you're either eligible or not.
I think there's a lot of people in this town that are eligible that do not sign up for it.
Well, they're not gonna sign up for it.
But there's a lot of people now that are being direct certified without having to sign up for it if they're in some kind of a, Laurie, correct me. I'm not sure I know all the proper term. Is it a Medicare program or?
Yeah, the state has been incorporating more and more programs, like Medicaid, and to make the eligibility factor come into play for families to become directly certified and receive a free lunch without having to fill out a lunch application.
What if the parents don't want, if their private information's private, unless?
When they receive the letter home, it says on there, just to phone us. And we, and we just take them off.
Because of their enrollment and certain insurance benefits.
They're automatically enrolled.
They're automatically enrolled, which has.
Isn't that like, so like, not private? I mean, how can you do that? I guess I think it's wonderful, they're trying to do wonderful things.
It's not streamlining the process.
But I think that there's people there that feel.
It's all streamlined.
No, see, I get your point, though. Do we know the annual revenue?
Well, I have the monthly, because I only grabbed the October. They asked for the October figures. And the October monthly revenue for just the paid meals is $48,500. And I did feel a 4% decrease from last year, October of '13, to this year. So it does.
That's my concern, are you gonna have fewer kids getting lunch?
Participation dropped by 4%.
Because I might say, gee, $3, I might make them their lunch now. You know, are they gonna be, is that gonna hurt?
$380,000 a year, roughly, 380?
I haven't done that.
I only have taken an average of, I don't know, the months will vary, but I, that's a general average.
Right, that's, yeah, by the 10th, they 400.
400?
For the, for the year?
Per year, yeah.
Yeah.
So 25% is gonna increase our revenue by $100,000, that's my point.
Well, I mean, assuming that also is participation.
Yeah, that's not profit.
Well, I know, but any additional revenue is additional revenue.
Right, but that's saying that the numbers stay the same. If the numbers drop, the revenue will go down.
I think fewer people get lunch.
Well, you're gonna have to make some assumptions.
Right, right.
Well, my point is, though, why can't we do 40 cents to the 50? Because 40 will get us to the 270. We're gonna save 20%, we're still gonna increase our revenue by.
But you gotta stay at that 281.
$80,000, yeah, we're gonna be at 271.
As long as you.
Go up 40 cents to the 50? Why don't we match the 270 that they require? It's not like we need the additional revenue, right? I mean, we could use it, but.
Because the requirement, we are way down to 81.
No, it said anybody under.
It's gonna be up to 276, though, I heard.
Right, 276 is the actual number.
Well, why don't we wait till they tell us to bump it again, though? I don't even wanna bump it every year.
Well, I mean, I think that that's part of the issue, is trying to bump it every year. You know, and historically, when we do increase the prices, we do go drop in participation a bit, too. So, I mean, it doesn't, you know, because people decide that they wanna, you know, send in lunches or not eat.
I guess, because I kinda understand, because last time we did it in 25 cent increments. And this time to go up 50 cents, kinda seems.
You did it one during the school year. So last time.
It was twice in, yeah, right.
You did it, we announced it before the holiday break, 25 cents. And then it took place in that January. And then you did another 25 cents starting the school year. So overall, in a six-month period, you did 50 cents.
So we're just doing it all at once, just. Because now at $3 a lunch, we're gonna be the, one of the highest in the. I know they're gonna go up, too, maybe, but they don't have to, though. Because they're, they're above the 270, all of them are.
Well, but it depends on, the weighted average, I mean, just depends on how many kids are at each level that are currently eating.
Right, but every other district is over min, like 275, well, elementary 255. But I'm sure they hit that weighted 270, like Munson I was looking at, or Southwick.
I thought the weighted average was 281.
Well, that's what it's gonna be.
With the 50%.
That's what our 50 cents. But they're notifying anyone who's under 270. So obviously, 270 is their number. So if we hit 271, which would be a 40% increase, 40 cents increase, that's 20% less than the 50 cents. I know it's not big money, $28 for, if you order lunch every day, per student, but I don't know.
Your point's certainly well-taken. It just means that we'll have to be at this sooner, rather than, you know. We were able to wait two years for that last increase. Now, you wouldn't be able to wait two years again.
But a revenue increase is gonna be around $80,000 with a 40 cent increase. I mean, that seems substantial that, I know it's a self-funding program, but it funds itself this year. So now we're gonna increase the revenue next year by $80,000.
But I'm sure her expenses increase, too, every year.
Not by 20%, she said 3%, right?
Correct, well, it's up 3%. But my, for overall, my food cost is 36% and my labor cost is 53% annually. So right, right there, I'm at 89%. So there isn't like huge profit.
No, I know, but it'll be all additional revenue. Any additional charge, unless, unless volume goes down, which I guess could happen, I think volume will be down the higher you go. So what's the goal? To increase it, you know, it's a bell, I know, but where do you wanna hit the bell? I don't know. I make more out of 10 cents.
But it'll last hard to expand, too. And I only know this because when I sit on health advisory, we kind of have these conversations about school lunch. If we wanna try to provide something that students may prefer, wanna eat, it may cost a little more. And this may be a way to improve our food offerings to the students.
Right. I'm just. Absolutely, because I do have to, you know, do a balance of, you know, what I offer from USDA purchased foods and what I can outright purchase, you know, for, you know, extravagant type things. So there is that balance. But we can always then do more, you know, local, you know, I hate to say it, but it is. It's more expensive to buy from the farm down the road than, you know.
Right, ordering in bulk, so that's prepackaged and processed.
Right.
And, you know, a lot of our equipment really needs to be replaced. It's very old, if it can be replaced.
Can the electrical system handle it?
No.
I know, just hearing that that was a problem with the washer? The dishwasher at the high school? With the server.
The trip's a circuit.
All right, so I think we had a good discussion on this. And I can appreciate where you're coming from, Greg. But at the same time, I feel the same need that why do we need to come back in another year to redo the issue? So I think we're revisited, thank you.
I think just, my last point is to go up twenty-five percent seems excessive, because we did it two years ago as well. And if we don't need to do it for the revenue, which we don't, I mean, we, the additional revenue's gonna be there even with the forty cents, then why go to fifty, only to save us a step, a year or two from now? That's, I guess, my only point.
Well, because I think when you keep going back to parents, it's like, oh, another increase, another increase.
Well, but I think two ninety is different than three dollars to parents for a lunch. You know, I can remember when it was a dollar when I was there, and now it's a...
And you have to charge your pay.
All right, enough said, really, it's not that big of a...
So, would you like to make a motion for us with this?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we increase the school lunch program by fifty cents across the board.
Okay, motion made.
I'll second it.
And seconded, any further discussion?
You don't wanna second it, it's not our fault, people.
No, wait a minute, you can't say that one.
It's the federal government telling us what to do. All right, I seconded it. And it's been seconded, okay? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries forward five zero. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good seeing you again.
Okay, so moving down, we have five point two point two, which is summer school requests for Algebra One, and this is where we...
We have Dr. Flanagan in here, and Mr. Marhef Guyer. So, the first item that got moved up is a request to run a summer school program specifically for, would be for one course, in Algebra One course. And in order to run a summer school course or courses, you have to make sure that they're self-sustaining. So if you take a look at not only the memo from Dr. Flanagan, but then the memo to Dr. Flanagan from the guidance department breaks down the amount of students we would need to make sure that it's self-sustaining, and also gives the dates of the proposed course, and that it's, right now, just for Algebra One.
Mr. Marhef Guyer, our tag team member today, he's gonna cover this one, but we'll answer questions together.
Okay. So I know how to read, but what, kind of a little more background on the first part of it. We did see an increase, or a spike in failures two years ago, which dropped last year, which have dropped a little more this year. But despite that, we still unfortunately do have students who struggle through that course. And with that, we've had a number of meetings this year about how to meet the needs of those students before they move on to geometry or Algebra Two. And after looking at a lot of different scheduling options, we actually feel that running our own Algebra One summer school course at the high school would be probably the most effective first step. Because one of the things we're finding is that for the, those students who don't successfully complete Algebra One here, their, their two options at this point are either to go to another district over the summer, and basically, for lack of a better expression, they kinda get what they get when, when they go there, which may not completely match up with our scope and sequence and, and the topics that we focus on the most. Or their other option then is to go back into Algebra One the following year as a, as a quote-unquote tenth grader, and now they're stuck in a position of taking Algebra One for a full year again, and with taking a standard geometry simultaneously in the fall.
And that's not a best practice.
No, that would be hard.
Right, and especially for...
It's kinda hard to do one without the other, doing it simultaneously's gotta be tough.
Right, and if they didn't, you know, one of the things we're noticing is if they, if they didn't pass, pass it successfully the first time around, they're still not going to get the full course by the time MCAS comes in May. And then what we're kinda seeing with this, too, is it really manifests itself in the, in the standard Algebra Twos with the struggles we're seeing there. So we're asking to be able to run our own four-week Algebra One course at the high school, Monday through Friday, eight AM to eleven AM. We'll figure out our own, we, we've had a couple of our own math teachers who are interested in, in teaching it. The cost, like Mr. Smith said, you know, we need to be kinda a self-sufficient program, so there's a cost associated with it.
Well, we'll open that up to the board, if anyone has any questions or comments.
That's a great idea, I mean, why have our students travel to another district when they can stay right here? And it's a wonderful idea.
Now, do you feel confident that you'd be able to get twelve students? Because even if you get eleven, would that really...
We talked about that, and one of the other options we were kinda playing with is that if we didn't, we, obviously, our students come first, first come, first serve, but we might even offer it to incoming freshmen from the, from Virgilin, who might need a little extra boost of math before they come to the high school. So that's something that we were kinda toying with.
One of the benefits, or one of the draws we see to it, too, is, you know, rather than having students make the, you know, some people may just choose it out of more convenience, rather than driving to Agawam or Westfield every day, like, over the summer, or, and rather than having to double up, you know, the following year.
What are the costs for the other towns, just to make sure we're in line with what they charge?
Agawam is one fifty, however, we are offering an extra hour a day, so we're getting five more hours for your money. And we just felt like, with the complexity of algebra and making sure that our kids get the right instruction, it just seemed to, to be the right way to go.
I would say for convenience of parents, most of these students can't drive yet.
Yeah.
They have to drive to Agawam.
Right.
And then one, one of the other benefits is they, their letter grade would, because they took it here, would, would be factored into their, their GPA and everything, whereas, whereas when they take it out of district, we bring in the, the credit, but not necessarily the grade.
So are you confident this'll run this summer?
You hope so, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, because I just look at it from, and I agree with it, I think it's a wonderful idea, but I look at, my kid just got out of school, two hundred dollars, and I got a vacation plan the third week of July.
But our students do take Algebra One at Agawam currently, right now, so those classes are, are running, so just, and again, if we get into that, you know, we can't fill it from our own students, we'd be more than happy to bring in Virgson's students who maybe did not have a strong year.
Like I said, I, I think it's a great idea, I just, you know, I look at the cost, and I understand it has to be self-sustaining, but it's just another thing that we're passing on to our parents, and I feel we shouldn't have to, but I understand why we do.
Well, the student, either way, they've gotta take the Algebra. They have to take a second math, two maths, their ju, their, their tenth grade year, sophomore year.
You will have an air conditioner on my home.
I hope so.
We'll find one.
I believe that we accept the summer school request for Algebra One as stated in the last ten twenty fifteen memo.
Okay, motion's made.
I'll second it.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries forward five to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck with that. And then, don't go anywhere, because five point two point three was high school program of studies revision, two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen.
Okay, I hope you all received the packet, I'm just gonna go in order. The first item that is brought to tonight is regarding the add-drop period. And just to give you a little background, this is actually brought forth by our principal advisory committee, which is made up of representatives from every department. So this is really a teacher-driven initiative. For, for quite some time, I think the teachers have been a little bit frustrated with the current add-drop process, and if you're not familiar with it, we typically give them five days at the start of the semester. And from classroom perspective, it causes a lot of disruption to the natural flow of the classroom, because a lot of the times, teachers are a little bit hesitant to get into the, the nitty-gritty of the course, because they know that people are gonna be coming and going. And then when the students move to another class, there's a little bit of catch-up that has to be done to get the student on track. So the teachers felt really strongly that we should probably work to reduce that, at least for first, for first semester. And then the students, for the spring semester, they would have all of the fall semester to make that choice. The one thing I wanna emphasize is we would never, at least while I'm here, we'd never get rid of add drops for levels, because we really wanna encourage our students to challenge themselves. So when things don't work out in an honors level course, we feel very strongly they should have that option to drop down. But this is strictly for, you know, we get a lot, I, I keep track of the data of students dropping courses and on the form, they have to list why, and a lot of it is because I'm, teachers, and I, I don't know if that's a match, or, you know, my friend was not in the class with me. And we're really trying to promote our students to make really thoughtful approaches to their educational decisions. We're also trying to promote that they actually read the course of study, talk to the teacher ahead of time to find out, you know, tell me a little bit about the course. These are things that you would model if you were going to college as well. So from the teacher's perspective, it's become very disruptive, and they would like to see go from five days to three days. And then, of course, the semest, the spring semester, you have the entire fall semester to make that decision. But there would not be a five-day in the, in the spring semester.
Or a three-day.
Correct, right, it would be nothing, because they have the whole fall to kind of figure out, you know, if that's the right choice for them. So, any questions?
Well, I will open it up.
Yeah, here we go.
Don't say that. From a parenting perspective, with children coming at me, I think my head might explode if they only had, I guess it takes, the year starts off so fast and so furious, that the teachers aren't even able to get a grade out there, for the kids aren't even able to get a flavor of the class. This is like the first three days of school, where then they have a long vacation break. It just seems like I just wouldn't even, I, I respect where the teachers are coming from, and maybe they just need to get the rigor going fast, and then the kids are gonna know within three days, this is not happening. I, I don't, I just personally, from my perspective, I respect where the teachers are coming from, but I just think that this is, and then to not be able to change something the second semester, you might just, I mean, changing because your friends aren't in the class is not appropriate, but you might just get into a class, and there could be a multitude of reasons why it is just not gonna happen for you, and now you can't, you don't even have an option? I think that that's abusive.
Well, remember, our policy study is pretty descriptive in terms of, you know, the syllabus, the different elements, the syllabus is our online, a lot of our students, we try and encourage them to talk to guidance about these decisions, they talk to their friends about these decisions. I just think from the teacher's perspective, think about, we're, we're giving assessments with the new standards that are coming at us, we wanna assess that first week, and a lot of teachers are, are kind of saying, I can't start, really, my class for five days, because there's all this back and forth going on. For me personally, I think five, three days is not that huge of a, of a gap, but for our staff, I think, I think it is, so, and again, they have all spring, or all fall, to kind of make those decisions about what's happening.
I know, but we're talking about teenagers, and they change their mind as the wind blows, and I feel it, what I'm having a hard time with is the second semester one, where there's absolutely no choice in an add or drop. I think, can we, would a three-day, like, do, you know, giving a three-day in that second semester, do you think that would be something teachers would be comfortable with? Because I, I feel that not giving the kids that choice, because you feel, you have a freshman, you know, they can read that book from front to cover all they want, but they're still getting used to the school.
Keep in mind, the, the data that I'm collecting is showing a majority of our drops are, you know, not crazy about the teacher, I couldn't, my friend and I wanna be in the same class. We're not seeing it because, and, and if it's a rigor issue, you know, they, we don't, we don't ever wanna change the add-drop period. So if the class is too hard, we encourage them to, you know, get in their comfort zone. So my question, I guess, would be, why are you, why are you making that change?
Family speak is a form of...
Yes, please, I, I'm waiting for more insight.
I can see both sides, and if you listen to Dr. Flanagan, I mean, this has come, I almost grassroots to, to her, and she's presenting to us.
Right.
I mean, if we would like something different, then I think we've gotta give her some type of charge parameters, because she's not gonna be met with open arms, she goes to the principal advisory committee, and she says, the school committee didn't like it. We've gotta give her some type of direction.
Not that we didn't like it, we have some concerns about that.
Concerns, okay.
Because we can, we, I can appreciate that, the back and forth, changing, because five days can make a difference, you're right, but again, I feel the first semester, it's such a staggered start to begin with at school. I'm sorry, I know you did have some questions.
Oh, no, um, just one thing to add with that, one of the things that we see with the flurry of changes, too, you know, these master schedules are built a year in advance, so we're working on it now with optimal and maximum numbers for all these courses. So when they come in, you know, my three closest friends aren't in this class, so all of a sudden, I want this class, you know, it's not like college where they can just take no class, you know, if they, if they dropped.
Right.
They have to go somewhere. So now, you know, I know our guidance department right now is doing a fantastic job trying to balance, you know, sections and, and all the, and all these different things, and then all of a sudden, there's a flurry, and now you have two people teaching the same course, the same subject, going, how come, you know, two weeks ago, we both had sixteen, and now you have eight, and I have, you know, thirty, and we're begging for two other kids to get in there, because their two closest friends are in there.
I'm gonna depend on the class size I get, well, I need a couple extra books, and I have to order books, or, you know, the desks, there's not enough desks. Just, it's really, from a teaching perspective, can be very disruptive.
And now it's like, a student perspective, so Jack, why do you have to...
No, it's, it's interesting, because I see both sides, you know, like, last year, I remember, I switched into Mr. Mackey's class last year, you know, I was taking, I forget what class, and then I was able to drop it, and I went into Mr. Mackey's, you know, TV production class, which was frankly, one of the best classes I ever took in high school. And so, you know, I see both sides, you know, but I think that, you know, I understand that most kids drop it because, you know, their friends aren't in it, or because, you know, the scene is too hard, or, you know, whatever the case may be. And I think if that's, if that's the case, then, you know, then of course, you know, because I, I do agree, you know, the first five days of a, you know, of a semester, or of a, you know, in the start of the semester, it is fairly chaotic, where, you know, you don't know what's kind of, you know, going on, or some teachers, you know, if they wanna give, you know, a test or a quiz in the first five days, they can't really, because then the kids are dropping it, you know, it is a headache. But I'm not sure that I'm totally on board with, you know, just, you know, not allowing anybody to make any change. Because, like I said, you know, making that, making that change in Mr. Mackey's class was one of the best decisions that, you know, that I've made in high school. But it all depends, and I don't know if there can be, you know, that's the general rule, and then there can be, you know, exceptions to the rule, you know, based on teacher, you know, if teacher recommends it, or, you know, I don't know how you play that.
I, I don't know, I mean, I don't wanna speak for the staff, and I'd love the opportunity to go share them in this discussion with them, but I don't know if, you know, keeping the five-day at the start, and then, you know, the...
A three-day?
I don't know, some kind of immaterial.
Because I could totally...
I know that they, I know that the big push was the second semester, and the staff felt very strongly at that point, I mean, you've been here a full semester, you've, you're talking to people, you have opportunities to talk to the teacher of that potential class, you should be able to make an informed decision of, of where you go.
But I'm not so sure, given the rigor and what we're demanding, and I'm not saying we're putting too much on these kids in the first semester, how much they're thinking ahead to the second semester.
Well, we, they do meet with their guidance counselor.
Oh, I know, they meet with guidance counselors, but that might be the only time they're focusing on that second semester. I'm just not sure that they're all talking to their friends, or, or going in advance, and, and as you just said, talking to the teacher to get an idea of what's going on. I just don't know if there's that time. I'd like to see some sort of a, a window in the second semester.
Can I also state that one of the things we talked about, too, is that I have discretion to make changes. If, if there's a unique situation, like, Jack, your situation, maybe there is, you know, our C-Tech kid, some, an opportunity arises for them to do some, you know, changing of their schedule, we did discuss that there would be that flexibility with it. But, you know, the idea of the majority of our changes coming from really reasons that aren't academically focused is problematic.
No, I can understand it. No, I can understand where this is coming from, and the chaos that it does cause.
The other thing I wanted to mention was, I, I know, like, you know, the kids, and as I say this, I need everybody to understand, I know that guidance's job is Herculean. I get that, okay. But they fill out their, their schedule in February or whatnot, and then, last year, my kids were, they put it in the first day, because they had to have that AP bio. So they had it, first day goes in, June rolls around, and I'm like, well, what's happening with that? And they haven't even had the opportunity to get to it yet, because obviously, there's, there's seniors before them, and there's how the levels go. And I'm thinking, like, well, we need to know, so we know what's happening to us this summer, what, what are you gonna have to study, what are you gonna have to do? And some kids didn't know what their schedules were, or weren't aware of, didn't get some of the things that they wanted, and they, because they don't have an erotic mother, maybe, but they didn't know what was happening to them until they get into school in the fall. And then they're like, wow, this isn't what I thought I was gonna get. And I think that that's where some of it comes, too. And again, it's not guidance's fault, because I understand they're trying, and then with the scheduling is a nightmare. And that's my other concern, that maybe some of these kids are, I'm not talking about the ones that wanna be with their friends, but some of them, I think, might not even know what they're getting into. Like, you're, I'm gonna take two APs this year, and then you find out you can't, that AP, you can't just put anything else there, you're gonna have to get something that isn't a level up or down, it's just a completely different course. And how does that work? You know, and I guess that these are just some of the concerns that I, I have.
Don't bring it to our guidance counselors, are there early at the start of the school year, too, so there's that opportunity, if parents, if students need to come in and make adjustments.
Honestly, I think that if there's a way for, you know, special cases to be made, I, frankly, I think for the majority of the kids, I don't, I don't think it's a really big issue. I think, because like, you know, to your point, there is, the whole reason why kids change classes, for the most part, is to be with their friends, or to be with a teacher that they quote-unquote want, or, you know, and I think that it is a way to kind of get out of challenging yourself, for, in some cases. So, I think, you know, if there is, you know, if there are special cases to be made, you know, I think that I don't really see that, you know, there being a big issue because, you know, I have no sympathy for the people that, you know, just want to be with their friends.
No, I know.
Well, no, that's not what academics is about.
Right, exactly.
And I agree.
How does the policy work right now? Do they have to meet with their guidance counselor in order to...
They do, there's actually a form that they have to sign, they have to give the reason, and that's where I get the data from. It has to be signed by their parent and has to be approved by myself.
And have you ever denied a request?
I have not. Because the policy allows for...
Any excuse or just add or go?
Well, anyway, we're faced with, with the three options. One is to accept it as is in front of us. The second is, is to give Dr. Flanagan some direction, take it back to principal advisory. Or third is, is to come up with our own policy and vote on it tonight. And that, that's where we're standing right now.
Well, even if we come up with our own policy, we should think about it. I mean, we can't do that.
Absolutely.
We need to, she need, I mean, that's, that's...
Yeah, but it's...
It's for them, they're the, they are the educators.
That's why I don't know if it's...
But I believe we give Dr. Flanagan some direction, we can't say, come back with something, she comes back, we say again, gee, we don't like this.
But I don't know if it's our, I don't know if we should be developing a policy around how we want ad drop to work. I don't know if that's our...
Well, I don't, well, here's the questions that I would, I would say, that A is the first semester with the three days, because everybody seems to be moderately comfortable with the three days, right?
Yeah.
So, it's really the second semester.
It's really the second semester.
So, the question then is, does the committee feel comfortable with no ad drop in the second semester, a potential three day ad drop or what's there now is a five day ad drop?
Right.
I guess that would be the direction we would ask for.
Yeah.
If there's any direction this ad committee would want to ask for.
Because has there been a way or an outline process for how special circumstances would be taken into account?
Right, that's what I'm wondering.
Um, well, we certainly wouldn't give it if you want, you know, be with your buddy or that, but, I mean, I would...
I'm saying, how does a student know how to access that?
I would think that it would be like a conflict with schedule, like, like Jack, "I really want to take this class, it wasn't available," or, you know, those kind of circumstances.
Right, because we want a way to decrease the number of kids switching in.
We had a student who didn't get accepted to their externship till late, well, that's a schedule change, so of course we make those provisions for students.
Well, I think there would have to be some sort of guidelines established, like you said, because you can't be with your friend.
I mean, it's hard because that's what they want, how do we stop that?
And it's really hard, it's going to be hard.
Yeah, but the kids are savvy, I mean, they're not, they don't have words.
Oh, they know, well, they know how to work it, yeah. I, I was just asking you, how would students know if they, how they would access sort of that special circumstance or that process?
We could do it on a form, that's what we currently...
So, it would be through guidance?
Yeah, through guidance.
And would you do maybe a parent meeting instead of a parent's signature?
Um, we could.
I don't know if that would be a little more intimidating to a child or...
I mean, the volume of ad drop right now is, is really...
But that's, that would be another step where the, the student would say, "Oh, but now I got to get my parent in here, there's no way that's going to happen."
What is the volume?
I'm just, oh, God.
That's a lot.
At one point, my paper was up to, up to here.
Have you seen an increase in the last couple of years because of something or do you think it's just steadily word gets out or not?
It's been pretty consistent.
Even in your time too, there was a lot of ad drop.
No, what's worse, spring or fall?
Um, definitely, well, the spring.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, I think definitely spring.
I would say, I'd say spring and I think even more so the perception of it in spring because, you know, as Dr. Flanagan was saying, like, you know, people kind of understand fall semester, like, I'm coming in off the summer, may, like, maybe I got my information late and I think the staff kind of fits that. But where the, where the catch is, is that last week of January, you've had, you've been in school since before Labor Day and now in late January, you're still unsure if you want to, you know, take team sports, you know, kind of thing. I think that's where the rub is.
All right, so Greg, would you propose?
I didn't, I'm sorry, I think the question is whether or not we want to ask the impact of a three day on the second semester or not. I mean, we can certainly vote on the proposal as it is and that, I mean, so I, I don't have kids in high school, so I have to take all of your perspectives because I'm not there yet, so I don't fully understand it other than the input that I get.
Well, I, I understand it and, you know, I haven't thankfully come across it, you know, and I tell her to be very, very careful because it's not, ad drop is for specific circumstances, not just because I don't like the teacher or I want to be with my buddies. Because this is about school, it's about learning, it's not about, you've got plenty of time to socialize, you know?
Do we find that there's certain teachers kids end up getting, they're like, "Crap", and they like want out? I'm being honest, I mean, do we have teachers, of course, you can't say specifically, but no, but I'm being honest. It's a difficult question for her to answer, but it's the children, kids getting into, we're talking about children. But, no, but sometimes, it's one thing if it's your friend, that would be like a straight up, "Please, go, go to lunch." But if, if, if we're finding consistently that children are thinking, "Okay, there's four courses offered, two in the spring and two in the fall and two or three different teachers teach it and they get one teacher and, you know, this is for something outside of this particular thing or to be thought of, why is this a concern?" It might not happen. But if it is happening, I think there's something to that to, it's got to get fixed at the other end. It's not our job, but you know where I'm going with this, right?
I do.
If there's a, and I don't want a kid stuck in a class. No, but there's also kids going to a class and they, if the, if the combination of teacher kid isn't right and that kid can see it in the first couple of days of school, or it might take a couple of days, sometimes people don't mesh. And I hate to say to a kid, "Here you go, you're screwed for this teacher for a semester, it's not going to work." You know, better they're out and they're doing something else, that's my concern. Not the ones that want to get a coffee and come in and play with their friends.
But I think, I think Dr. Flanagan, you are, you are going to have some special circumstances.
Absolutely.
And allow for something like that.
This whole thing is not about, you know, closing opportunities for kids. It's really to make sure that our flow of our classrooms are, you know, we're, we're ready to go when that class starts, it's...
To Greg's point, I think it comes down to what do we want in the second semester? Because we can beat this thing to death all night long.
So, so Gina, would you change, see then, based on this discussion that there would be no ad drop? I mean, would you say, because I, I'm a firm believer in doing what you say and saying what you do, so if you say there's no ad drops, then there is no ad drops. But if you're telling us and then there will be extenuating circumstances that there would be ad drop, then would you be...
It has to be written in something.
Something has to be right.
You know, based on the principle of, you know, if it's your final decision.
Or the ministry, top administrator, I don't know how you want to word it.
Or department head or what, you know, however, yeah, whatever the avenue is.
Actually, I think this is just, this is making ad drop being used for its actual purpose instead of, I think this is actually beneficial.
I know, that's why I wanted Jack's opinion because he's been there and done that. No, he's, he's giving me a lot more insight.
But there, no, but there is going to, there are going to be extenuating circumstances and they just have to be defined.
Right.
Well, I don't know if that, you'll be able to find, I'll give you one example under the letter C. If I'm correct, seniors have to make sure that they're in our place to graduate. That means the second semester schedule may have to be changed because they say, "We failed the course for a semester."
Exactly, right.
I mean, that's just one circumstance that I put up with, I mean, you can't have Dr. Flanagan outline every possible circumstance.
No, you can't.
But if you leave it to the discretion of an individual, the principal, whoever you decide that you want to leave it to, then they have a discretion and then we're allowing ad drop for extenuating circumstances, we're not, we're not, we're not allowing.
Right, not allowing.
That's all I'm asking for.
I agree with you there.
And it makes me feel any better, that's a policy at Minnetok, is that they have to provide the principal a detailed letter of why this change is happening.
And has that reduced the number of...
That I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I just, I just looked up their policy.
But if you make it, if you make it more cumbersome upon the student to change a class for any other of the various reasons that we've all discussed, they're not going to do it.
And more importantly, we want them to do their homework when it comes to making those choices.
Oh, yeah.
Right, exactly. I, I, and that's where I'm agreeing, that's where I sort of agree with this, that we want to empower the students as much as possible and let them realize that their, their actions have consequences.
Well, and sometimes you're going to get in a situation that isn't the most comfortable situation and that may last a couple of months and that's okay because that's the world.
Well, you know what, it's not going to be, it's not going to, it's going to get worse when you go to the real world.
No, I know, I'm not diminishing your point so well, I'm just saying that there's some reality, the fact that, that people are going to conflict sometimes.
So, Greg, what would you recommend though, how we would word something like that to be known?
Well, because we...
I mean, I'm...
Do you want to put that there would be ad or drop here during the second semester pending approval from an administrator?
No, I don't even know if I would put that in there, I don't even know if I would...
Would you be okay if I brought it back to my principal advisor?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, because we understand that this isn't your full...
And then we'll out, yeah, we were just talking, we just outline a formal kind of letter?
Let us see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let us see.
Because the rest of it is fine.
A, B, and D are fine.
Okay, perfect.
So, we don't want to vote, we'll just have the whole thing come back to us, we'll just table this as is?
Table just one, we want to go through the course.
No, no, I'm sorry, yes. But I meant we're going to...
When we make the motion, we'll move, will we move this part?
That's what I wanted to make sure we're all on, okay. All right, so sorry, we didn't need to like beat that, but we really, a lot of us are on the fence about it.
That's all right.
But it really did help me a lot tonight, so thank you.
It makes sense, it does make sense, believe me.
I hope the rest of this will be easy.
We'll find out.
I'm really excited about this next new course that we've been trying to develop for a few years now and it kind of goes along with our mission statement of honoring diversity. We're trying to bulk up our course selections to offer students more centralized focus on a variety of issues. So, the English department is now working on a new elective course called Social Issues in Women's Literature. And the focus of the course is really to give students exposure to have how female authors throughout history have had a social impact on many different things, class, race, religion, all kinds of gender issues and so forth. So, this, we're, if this gets approved, we would actually work on the formalized curriculum this summer, myself and Mrs. Abel are going to work on that this summer. And just hoping that, I really do think that we would get a lot of kids involved and then not just females too, I think it would be a good thing for, for our male students to take as well.
The way everything is evolving, just the way society's evolving today, I think this would be a home run.
Yeah, I do too.
Dr. Flanagan, tell us a question, the four credits, would that be four English credits or four graduation credits?
Four, no, it would not be English, this is an elective course.
For graduation credits?
Yeah, because we have to keep English nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Is Abel's going to teach it?
That is the plan, yeah. We'd like, we'd really like her to teach it.
This is a standard course?
Well, that's what she's going to do. Standard level course, yeah.
Or do you want to...
I, I move that we approve the course, Social Issues in Women's Literature, Social Issues in Women's Literature.
Okay, motion made.
A second.
And seconded, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That part carries forward five to zero. Thank you.
So, next you see some ELL program or English Language Learners courses for literacy. And one of the reasons that we have put this into program studies is to provide a more streamlined process for our students who come to us who are non-native English speakers to be able to acquire the English language while earning their, their ELA credits. It can take the place depending on the level of their English proficiency of their ELA course. And this allows us to schedule that and have like a placeholder of when the course would happen. And it would be designed around those levels that you see, which are designed around the English proficiency levels outlined in, in an ELL program.
To tell you a question, why, why are they worth five credits? Instead of four?
That might be a typo, these should be, these, I didn't, didn't have that.
She said four credits?
These are, yeah, these are standard based courses, standard level courses.
And, 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 Mr. Lee, do you see the course being in the B C block where it goes full year?
Yes, yeah, so it's going to be, Mr. Page and I talked about how to schedule it because staff is shared between buildings and so it would be the, yeah, it would be a consistent timeframe so that that staff member could also get to Bertrand Park to provide services there. Right now, it's a hit or miss, we have someone who goes around and it's almost nilly willy to get a new student who comes in, say, last week and now an ELL teacher, ESL teacher is reorganizing, literally, is reorganizing their schedule and not servicing other students at other schools to try to fit someone in. This would be a block that regardless of when the students came to us, they'd be able to get right into it.
And I'm, I'm going to conclude that these four courses could all be tied to the same block.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was...
The reason we differentiate them is because your language proficiency level is going to be different, so your instruction would be different.
Right.
But that would be figured out through grouping.
Right, and it's not like you have the volume of students needing...
Well, you do at certain schools, but not the high school. And we, we hope that they continue to come in at an early age and that their language proficiency level is at a higher level. Primarily, you would see students coming in as a newcomer into the high school and maybe, maybe going to the first or second level of proficiency after that.
So, they would do the forty-five minutes a whole year, either B or C, so then they'd still be able to take a band or a course on the flip-flop side if they felt like they wanted that for their art.
And they, and they don't necessarily have to be, yeah, they'll, they'll move through the proficiency level so that they're...
And when they get comfortable, they could take regular English if they feel so inclined and...
Well, they have to take, I just learned this tonight in my class, they have to, it depends on their MCAS score, I just learned this tonight in my retail class.
It depends actually on their access.
That's right.
Their access scores and...
And teacher input, they said today.
Teacher input, yeah, more access and the language assessment that you give the students that gives you the, the levels that you see in here of entering, emerging, developing, bridging and expanding, those are actual language proficiency levels. And we, so we grouped them together. Newcomers is separate because that's a whole other ball of wax. A newcomer could get through their newcomer curriculum in six to eight weeks and move into emerging and or beginning language skills. So, this provides them that opportunity without having to swap into a whole different course.
Yeah, that sounds very good way to figure it out.
It is.
I'll move that we add English Language Learners, the ELL program to the East Slamo High School Program of Studies.
Okay, motion's made.
A second.
Oh, second by that.
Would that one change, take it for credits?
Four credits, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
You make it worth four credits.
Okay, so we'll need to vote on that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, carries forward five to zero. Okay, you have one more, business law.
And our, our last course change is actually a title change from our law course to, to business law to more accurately reflect the text videos, the curriculum that, that the students and the instructor follow and, and to better fit in with the department overall. It sounds more appealing this way than it might have prior, I don't know what the old one sounds like. This sounds relevant a lot, a lot of folks, yeah.
Hey, go move to approve the business law adjustment to our program of studies as presented.
Okay, motion's made.
Second.
And seconded, Greg, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, carries forward five to zero.
Yeah, we'll table, we'll table the first one.
We're going to table that first one pending...
We'll be back.
Good luck, Dr. Flanagan.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, I appreciate it. That was a good discussion on that, it was, enlightened me. Okay, we are moving on, we have our old business, we have six point one, our superintendent's mid-cycle update.
Yeah, well, it's all you.
Okay, so as you know, we had, on our last meeting, everyone had given me their mid-cycle review for Mr. Smith and this is just going through his mid-year goals. And what I'd like to do is just read the last paragraph on there to just give you an overview of the evaluation. And I have Mr. Smith's performances at the proficient to exemplary level and standards evaluated as he leads our district forward into the twenty-first century learning environment. He continues to handle the many state initiatives and provides the necessary support for all staff members. However, he is sensitive to, to the demands placed on us from the state and this is why we have the involvement in our Western Mass Education Leaders Coalition. He demonstrates the ability to deal with a variety of issues and concerns and resolves them effectively. and resolves them effectively, and I think all of us have witnessed this in some capacity. And this can include personnel, special education, leadership, and budget concerns. Additionally, his dedication to our students and community is clearly evident. He makes an effort to not just attend but participate in many school and community events throughout the year. Overall, we feel his role as superintendent is positive and are confident he will continue to do well as we approach the end of the school year, and we look to see how our tests are and everything. I know Beth, that was your, that was your concern, and I do want to mention that as you look through the evaluational notice, I put proficient, but I also want to mention that we did have areas where some people had exemplary, some people had proficient, but when I kind of average it out, it did come to proficient.
Right.
But you know that you are working towards that exemplary in a couple of them, especially ones that we feel that I, that people had put that on. We had the instructional leadership and especially family and community engagement. I know that you really make an effort to put yourself out there, to attend a lot of events, to be in a lot of events, and I know it means a lot to not only us but to a lot of people in the community. So that is for you and...
Thank you.
Good job selling the salad here.
Yeah, oh, come on.
Number one.
Salad sold out.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that the pasta sold out, but salad sold out.
Do we have to approve that?
Yes.
I think we'll move to approve the super test bus cycle update for the year twenty fif- for school year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
Okay, motion made.
I'll second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay, carries forward five to zero. Okay, moving on. I can do this one too.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you. We have six point two.
We're going through the process again in June?
Week and a half. It was a little earlier this year.
To your point, I was just gonna say, to your point, last year, we tried to move it back so that it's...
Yeah, I think it's better.
Right?
Yeah, try. All right, so we have six point two, East Loma Garden Club, the Arbor Day Trees. At our last meeting, we had mentioned that each year for Arbor Day, the garden club donates trees to both Maple Shade and Mountain View for our fifth graders in recognition of Arbor Day, and this year, what they were doing is dedicate, or giving us some chestnut trees.
Chestnut, right.
Because we want, they wanna, you know, there's a, what are they called? The foundation?
It's the American Chestnut Foundation.
The American Chestnut Foundation are donating these, is donating these trees to be put at both the schools, and there are three of them, and one of the concerns we had was the whole tree nut allergy and because of that, the placement of it. So do you want to continue with what we researched and found?
Sure. Certainly, it was a concern, given that we do have students who have tree nut allergies, and so we sought out first our nurse leaders' opinion on this and then our school physician's opinion. In your packet, you have a, a letter from the school physician. A couple of things that I, I think we would need to take into, into account as, as you make this decision, that one, you're gonna be talking about the trees we receive, incredibly young trees, so it may take a series of years before they bear fruit, so to speak. The second point being that the, the school physician feels that it's a minimal risk in terms of our student population who may have tree nut allergy, that this is a minimal risk, and as you see in that second paragraph, she outlines that this might be something that could cause red and HGI, sneezing, stuffy noses. So I think with that piece, it might be important for us to think about where we plant these.
Yeah, I mean, your last sent, your second last sentence, this sums it up. Lasted through the chestnut tree reviews for sport, throwing up off the school yards, inadvertently injuring a person. I, we were gonna locate these suckers.
So, I just, I mean, they can throw mulch, for heaven's sakes. I mean, come on, or a pebble.
Chestnut trees on school grounds.
Well, first of all, I haven't spoken with George Kingston, who is the head of the garden club. He said, we're not introducing something new. If you were to go to walk the school grounds, you could probably find chestnut trees that are just a different species of the American, American chestnut. I haven't checked the school grounds, but...
I don't think there's any chestnuts around. Isn't that the whole issue?
No, not American chestnut. They would be like Japanese chestnut. So there are Ja- there are already chestnut trees around.
There's pine cones.
So...
And acorns that could get very big.
You can't. So the Board of Selectmen have, I watched their meeting when they brought it on as well, and they haven't approved them, but they're...
But for a different reason.
Well, but the, the advice from council, from my understanding, was that they would be held li- the town would be held liable for the specific, the trees themselves. If there's any additional care needed for the trees or if they were ever to be damaged, they would have to be, I think it's burned, specifically burned, and not put into some wood pile or whatnot. So there's additional potential that because it's a, a...
Protected.
Protected species and a specific gene that this company has developed or whatever, that it's, there's intellectual property to it, and you're not allowed to carry the fruit away, the nuts, no one's allowed. So we would have to be, do we have to then, you know, collect all the, the nuts that fall from the tree to ensure that no one takes them? I'm just saying this because the Board of Selectmen decided not to act on accepting the trees without, they wanted to see if the Friends of Brown would accept responsibility. I don't know why they would accept, maybe, well, I can't say that, but...
Is that where they were gonna locate them at the Brown property?
Yeah, that was, yeah, that's what the town was gonna...
That's where they wanted to put them, but they don't want to take on the additional responsibilities. So that being said, who's gonna be responsible for the trees? As a school district? As the Department of Public Works?
But what do we do with the trees they've given us in the past?
Well, we, we could cut down the, any of those white pines tomorrow and throw them in a wood pile. We'd done. These specifically, though, because there, there's intellectual property to them, you can't do that. There's specific criteria. I didn't read the packet. There's guidelines. Right, and so who's responsible for long guidelines? I guess is the question. If we accept it, then are the custodians of each building responsible, and if there's additional damage, do we have to hire a tree company, specifically come in and burn? And I'm just asking this because they didn't accept.
Wow.
No, I think that's, that's a valid point. I think, to your point, I'm sorry.
So Don's laughing at us.
Are we talking too much about chestnuts?
I was just in that whole discussion the other night, and the fact that they can't give away, every chestnut tree, the mir- it's a miracle that they've recovered them.
And that's how I feel. The environmentalists in me is coming in.
I know, but, but, but there's additional cross to it.
And there's a critical ratio.
If, if the coun- if council says you shouldn't take this on as additional responsibility, then, then should they be located on private grounds? Why don't they give them to someone who can just take them? I'll take them. I'll put them in my backyard.
I told, I told George I would take them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's really, but I want them there because I think diversity in our, in the trees is great.
I do.
You do, you do have a point in that the outside grounds are cared for by DPW, so it's, you're now involving two different departments. You know, our custodians don't, with the exception of, say, the perimeter around each building, they don't go and landscape and service our fields.
How, how big do these get?
I think they get fairly large.
I think they get fairly large.
And he told me that they grow rapidly within two to three feet a year.
Yeah, George told me the same thing.
And how long before they bear nuts?
Oh, that can happen, probably within five to seven years.
Yeah.
They're just gonna mow them. They go bing, bing, bing anyways.
So maybe we accept them with the condition that the Board of Public Works makes the same, only specifically because there's criteria. I think on Arbor Day, when we get a pine tree, we can plant the pine tree. I don't think we're gonna ask for permission to that.
Right.
But just because there's specific maintenance criteria that we have to sign, I think there's a signature line on it. Is there a signature?
Well, the signature line is that we wouldn't sell the actual fruit.
And do, and follow all the rest of the criteria in terms of how you dispose of the tree, if that ever comes to fruition, or, I don't know, I'm just saying.
All right, do we, I don't know if we have enough information to, like, who's gonna maintain these things?
Well, the garden club's gonna have to.
But they're not.
They're not gonna take it.
They're not going to.
Yeah.
So now do we need to talk to...
Let's accept that. I'm okay with accepting it. If DPW is okay with taking on the additional...
Well, I don't know that, but I don't know.
Well, pending the approval of the Board of Public Works, I'd say...
So do we want, do we want to table this until we get more information from the Board of Public Works?
Oh, my gosh, we've already done this, though.
I don't think it's a table. When's Arbor Day?
May first.
The end of next month.
It's May first.
Yeah, so I mean, we've got time. So we can approve it tonight, pending approval from the Board of Public Works. And if they're gonna be willing to take on the additional maintenance and sign that, that, that thing, then great, because we're not gonna be the ones responsible for the maintenance. That's all I'm saying. They're asking for maintenance criteria. Let's be fair, and those that would be forced to maintain it, let's ask if they want to take that additional responsibility. I think they'll be beautiful trees and a great addition.
I know, I, I agree.
The DPW most likely would say no, because when they take their lawn mower, they're gonna be just flipping those...
So then maybe we shouldn't be planting then chestnuts on campus.
Then that's why I said, do we just table, do we table it again until we get, talk to DPW and see what their feeling is on this?
Or we approve it pending their approval.
I think we should approve it pending their approval. We're good with it. I think that we'll be fine with these flying around the sky.
What if they say no? We're not, we're not, we're just gonna go zipping through there? What are we doing?
Then we have to go back to George Kingston and tell him.
Yeah, but we've already approved it. That's the problem. That's why I'm saying, I don't know.
No, if you approve it pending the Board of Public Works, and if the Board of Public Works says no, then we're done. That's the end of it, because we ended. Or we approve it. I'm not...
Well, I think you have a point. You, you, we will need to know that if there's specific care that needs to be accomplished with these trees, then we need to know that DPW can handle that.
Right, and there's just specifically, specific details that are outlined that someone's gonna have to sign on the bottom and say, I'm gonna be the one responsible for this criteria, right? And so I don't know that it, it's you. I mean, may, it could be because it's school grounds, right?
You have to pick it up chestnut.
But you're not gonna be. That's my point.
It's gonna go on your job description.
Yeah, yeah.
Your chestnut.
The next, the next review.
You know, a specific chestnut bag that I could use.
So I'll move that we accept the trees from the garden club pending the Board of Public Works approval as well.
Motion made. I'll second. And seconded. Any further discussion?
I just can't believe with all the wonderful trees out there, we're doing this.
What, so what do you want to do then? You want to just accept them though?
Take the vote.
No, no, no. You want to just accept them? I'll accept them.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm...
Or you don't want to accept them at all?
I think we need to.
Oh, he doesn't want them.
No, we're just gonna vote on this.
He doesn't want to be holding a bat.
Listen, I think it's a valiant effort that they wanna bring back the species, and the easiest way to do it is to give it away, and the best place to give it is to public grounds where they'll be enjoying it. I get all of that. I'm just saying there's specific criteria that they're asking us to sign up for.
So we had the motion made, seconded by Beth, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay.
Nay.
Got one nay, so it's four to one. Perfect. I can't believe that became our trust, became that much of a conversation.
Don't you remember our esteemed superintendent's how we should throw chestnuts at everybody? It's a little more...
You are adding to that story.
And back in the old day, you could have merry-go-round, slides with no mulch.
But they may not have American chestnuts.
Yeah. And we're all here. All right, so moving on, we have, moving down to new business, we have seven point one. We have a scholarship fund to vote on.
You actually have, you have two scholarships, seven point one, seven point two. These are new scholarships in your packet. Dr. Flanagan has asked us to accept them, formally accept them, so that our, our students can start to complete applications and put in for these potential scholarships. So you have seven point one, the Brian Sunter Memorial Scholarship, and then seven point two is the Ralph Schindler Memorial Scholarship.
Can I speak to them just yet? Brian Sunter was clearly one of my favorite students. He tragically died last year. He's class of two thousand and five. So very, so that's a wonderful thing that, that the family is doing. Ralph Schindler was my, was Dr. Flanagan, my colleague. He was principal here for fifteen years. So I think both of them will really add to our, I'm sure they'll be giving our awards. They will really add to our mayor awards night. They had a nice touch.
There's a lot of awards to go around that night.
So I recommend that we approve seven point one, the Brian Sunter Memorial Scholarship Fund, and seven point two, the Ralph Schindler Memorial Scholarship Fund.
Okay, motion's made. I'll second. And seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay, carries forward five to zero. Thank you. Okay, we're, got two down. That was good. We have seven point three, participation in the Fourth of July Parade.
Okay, in your package, you'll see the participation form for this year's Fourth of July Parade. If you remember last year, due to weather, we canceled, so we have yet to...
No, we didn't cancel.
No, we didn't, but the town. We've yet to use our new banner, so this will be the inaugural outing if we choose to participate with the new banner.
I don't see why we wouldn't.
So, yeah, let's do it. I move that we choose to participate in the Fourth of July Parade in this, this calendar year.
Okay, motion's made.
I'll second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay, carries forward five to zero. Now we just have to find ourselves a car this year. We don't have to walk.
Yeah.
We got a match.
Okay, we're moving down.
Is that a verb?
Match.
Is that a monster, a verb?
Right. So moving down on this, we got seven point six, policy GCF, professional staff hiring.
So in your packets, you have a policy that actually has been in existence for the last year, two years. It's an MASC policy, professional staff hiring. So when we revised our entire policy manual, we had gone to the policy that you see before you, with the exception of number four. Number four outlines a process for specific positions to have a search committee and how we go about developing that search committee. I think the key items here are that if you look at one through three, your hiring authority still sits with, if it's a building-level situation, it's a principal. If it's a district situation, superintendent, and if it's a position that falls under the school committee, it sits with the school committee. So regardless of what type of search committee you have, it still is a situation where ultimately the final decision is with that hiring authority.
Any, open that up to the board if anyone wants to speak on that?
No.
Or anything. And I see that Dr. Flanagan does have a comment.
I may.
Just as a point of clarification, because I think this topic is really important, position of the principal. Does, and I read the language, does this new policy prevent building principal for utilizing or picking department chairs to be a part of the selection process for the assistant principal?
No, we talked, well, no, right then. We, we discussed that because, so I think we could maybe clarify the language to an extent, but the specific unit A representatives would be chosen by the union. However, the rest of the committee is appointed by the committee or the authorized body. So in addition to the unit A representatives, you may bring in a department head who's a unit A.
You can go department chair as unit A.
So say, you wanna, you wanna, you, you decide to have two unit A members. So you tell unit A, I'd like two members, and they get their, your members through that process. But then in addition, you, you say, I would like the, a school committee member, a superintendent, and a department head, you know, in addition to...
Great. I was just concerned because I, I share this with superintendent. You know, that, the advisory committee is so important to me as a principal when I'm making decisions. And I, it's not that I'm against the representation of hiring, but you rely on the school leaders, which are department chairs, to kind of help you guide that process, and it's super important that the individuals who are on that committee are aligned to our district initiatives, our building initiatives, and that exemplify the professional standards that we have set forth as a district. And my only concern was that when you allow for a lottery, you could potentially open up for a situation where a unit A member who potentially might be on improvement plan, so they haven't met the professional standards of our, our school, of our district, of the state, you could end up with a person who has a, you know, a discipline record that may be not coming to work on time. So I would just hate to, to take away from my leadership from the department level to allow for somebody who I might not necessarily think should be on that, on that board. But if, if that, what you're saying is, is the case, I would, I'd be very supportive of it. I just think, I didn't think it was very clear when I read it.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, and I don't know if we should add some language to that effect, because we, we had that exact discussion. I mean, there's certainly value in bringing someone specifically that, that would have great input into what, you know, you're hiring for, so...
Can you use the words in good standing?
Well, I wouldn't go, no, no, I'd put that in, no.
I'm more concerned that I have the autonomy to select primarily my department chairs to be on that. If they want it and that I can say you get one person to be unit A and you can do your lottery, that's not the issue. But, you know, it's the voices around you during that time that are really important, and you really do want people who are buying into the work that we're doing.
So I, you say department heads, though, are you, are you talking multiple? You'd wanna add multiple?
For example, when we hired Mr. Marhefka, I had every department head represented. So it's, it's...
Well, I don't know if you can do that, though.
Well, see, but the thing is, it's, it's, think of it in this way. It gives every department a voice in the process, and I think every department has a different lens when they're looking at us, you know, what they want in an assistant principal.
Right.
So that way ensures that every department is represented. That's why I was nervous because...
Well, and I get that, but...
You can actually, you can actually say, I don't know if, if there would be department chairs, but you can say exactly that, that when we do the lottery, can we do five, six, seven different lotteries so that every department's represented?
But then going back to my original point, I want people on my hiring committees that are buying into our district initiatives, that are in good standing, both from a teaching aspect, from a professional standards aspect. I mean, do we really want people, and I'm gonna be very frank, on a hiring committee that have an axe to grind the district or have a record of unprofessional behavior? You know, this is just something for you to think about.
Well, hopefully, that's the minority of, of staff.
Right, I wouldn't like to think of that.
And also, it's probably, they're not the ones that are necessarily going for it.
That's not, that's, yeah.
But on the, on the other side of it, though, it's only an advisory committee as well. So in the end, it's the, the entity that's hiring.
Right, but I value so much my department chairs.
I know, I just don't know that...
They work really hard to promote.
Well, I don't know that adding every department head, so saying, all right, unit A, you get one representative, and I'm gonna pick, you know, four department, or the principal will pick, how many? Eight department, eight unit A members, and unit A, you're only allowed to pick one. I don't think that's, that was our original intent.
Well, that wasn't the intent when it came to the policy subcommittee.
The intent was, you know, you might bring in a department head as an advisor, but you leave the unit A representatives to unit A. But they have represent, they own representative.
That was the intent of the, when the policy came to us, was to insert unit A to have representation in the hiring process.
But they do. It's, they do.
But to...
I think we need to find, because I, I was under the impression that as a principal, I want a paraprofessional, my school secretary, I want a custodian, I want a school committee member, and I want my eight department heads. That's where I took it. And I want the unit A reps. Give me the lottery.
Which I would totally feel, come on, you.
But you're saying differently.
We're not keeping you from being able to have who you want. We're just saying, what's gotta be a lottery process?
That's what I'm trying to clarify, because it sounds like to me that I, that they get to pick the unit A, and the department chairs are technically unit A.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But maybe you can take who you choose, so long as one is a really member chosen by lottery.
Yeah, that's not the intent.
No, that's not the intent.
And maybe that's best in practice, but that wasn't the intent.
No, that wasn't the intent of what we talked about in our subcommittee.
I just really think you have to look back to the purpose of a hiring committee. It is to help the principal make a very sound decision that represents the values of our district and our school. And for me, the department chairs are groomed. I mean, they're doing the work of pushing the work forward. They're working on curriculum guides. They know the policies. They know the practices, and they are on board with that, and so their opinion really matters, and we're trying to cultivate them as instructional leaders. So it only makes sense to have them part of, of a situation like that. I just don't ever want to be in a situation where potentially have three people that, you know, this guy doesn't come to work on time, or this person's on an improvement plan, which is reality. plan, which is reality. It happens.
But I don't know that they're going to be the ones that are trying to get...
I can tell you very good, my last hiring with Mr. Marhefka, that was the case. I had to make a tough decision, and it was, and that's why I stayed consistent, department chairs. Because my theory, my thinking was, they're representative of every department, and they are on board with the values of our district.
Should we bring it back and ask all the administration how they feel, and then it'll give us an idea of how to...
Well, the tricky part is that this directly affects only two administrators. It affects the principal of the high school and the principal of the middle room.
And three, Lisa Dagan, right?
That's not...
The middle one.
Oh, sorry, Birch's son.
Sorry, Birch's son.
So it'll be three.
Right.
Because we want them to have who they feel...
No, it wasn't the intent right now.